Good evening and welcome to the Norton School Committee meeting. Norton Media is recording this meeting. If anyone else in the audience is recording, please inform us at this time. And we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start with our agenda tonight, I just wanted to give a big shout out to the Norton Police Department and the town hall for a great job that I think they did for the election. Changing schools, I know, wasn't an easy task, but I think it kept our staff and our students in a much safer position with the one entrance into the voting area. The signage was fantastic. It told you exactly where to go and where to park. My only suggestion would be at that first parking lot when you came in, I would also have additional parking up forward because there was a line of people that didn't realize that you could also park in the front. So that, but that's the first time doing it. I'm sure once everyone left, they saw that the additional parking was there too. So it shouldn't be a problem for the next election. But I just wanted to say a big thank you to everybody who made that happen. So we will start with our public hearing on voting for school choice.
So you have to, in order to open the public hearing, you have to take a vote to open the public hearing on school choice. So if you would do that, and then at the end, you close the hearing and then you can take your vote.
Okay. So...
You need to vote to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will open the public hearing.
Yeah. So before you, you have the recommendation, as you know, there is some changes. We currently have 138 students in grades kindergarten through grade 12. As you know, our program is a kindergarten through 10th grade program, but students can continue through being expelled, choosing to leave, or graduating. We currently have 10 kindergarteners, 14 first graders, 14 second graders, 12 third graders, 11 fourth graders, 13 fifth graders, 16 sixth graders, 15 seventh graders, nine eighth graders, eight ninth graders, four 10th graders, eight 11th graders, and four seniors. For a total of the 138, that brings in the over, slightly over $812,000 in revenue to this school system, and it allows for us to utilize the technology curriculum that we've implemented with those funds. The 2021 recommendation, as it stands right now before you, is in grades K through 5. Five seats, that is down from 10 seats in prior years for K to 3. And continues the no cap in grade 6 through 10, no cap meaning it could be 30 students in grade 6, or two students, or no students. And the rationale is if we were to open up school choice tomorrow morning, we already have a waiting list for kindergarten. If you only have five seats, you typically have done 10 seats. Based on some of the enrollment trends that we're seeing, we could potentially go up to 10 eventually. But at this time, as you know, we have to do this vote before June 1st, but we'd like to start the process earlier. What we would do is just inform everybody of a cutoff date. Let's say the cutoff date was May 1st, and if we didn't increase the seats from 5 to 10 in kindergarten, then we would have to do a lottery for kindergarten, and then have a waiting list for kindergarten. I don't see that being a problem.
Just school choice, though, not Norton residence?
That's just 100% only school choice.
Did you say you already have a list right now for kindergarten now?
Yeah.
And how many is that?
Right now, all total, it's over 10 for kindergarten at least at 10.
Bless your worship. And how many of those students already have siblings?
Well, we don't count that as part of that 5 number because we don't split families. And as a policy, you've established that when you've started school choice.
So how many kindergarten students are we looking at that are already coming in?
I don't know that. I have to play to the system of being as open as possible. When it comes to the family situation, that is a process where if you have to have a lottery, it could actually be a problem, where you're saying no on a lottery. So, because lottery requires that it's open to anyone and everyone who's applied. You can't establish a family policy for a lottery.
Okay. Because I think, I could be wrong, but I remember when my sons went to Little Lancers...
That's different. That wasn't under school choice. That was under your own established protocols.
So we have, now we have to follow what school choice you want.
Yeah. Now, the state's pretty flexible in terms of those types of situations. Typically, what they've done is they've kicked it back to the school board and said, well, that's a decision you can make, but it's after the fact, not as part of the lottery.
So it could come back to us and we can say, these three students who already have siblings...
Correct. Yes, and at this time, we're now closed. So in other words, we have 10, we're now closed, but we're accepting the 10. But you'd have to have, we'd have to establish a drop dead date such as May 1st, which would be my recommendation. Now, the graduating 4 means you're at 138. I usually put, on average, I've been putting eight students who leave school choice to go back to their districts or somewhere else. They leave, you know, they're further away, they're out of state, whatever it may be. So, you know, you're still projecting school choice numbers to be healthy and above the 138, so it would be more financial support. But anything can happen, as you all know.
And the reason why we're considering dropping the kindergarten registration?
Class size, class size. We have, we're utilizing, in the budget proposal you'll see in a few minutes, we're utilizing the addition of two kindergarten teachers for next year. So the cousin enrollment for K right now is still really unknown. As you know, for years, we haven't been able to count on birth rates because it's not accurate. I mean, when you're off by 35, 40 students, which creates two teaching positions, because you're not going to put 35 kindergartners in one classroom, you're in a situation, every year I tell FinCrom that I have one hold position for kindergarten. Every year that I've been here, we've had to use that position for the purposes of, all of a sudden, we get 30 residents that show up on August 1st.
And what's our flexibility if we vote for five spots and then we don't have the town residents that we think that we have?
Then you could open it up again. You could make, as long as everything takes place prior to June 1st, you have that flexibility. You have to make a determination in writing, electronically, it's filed now, through my office, on what your vote is and what you've established. If you do it after June 1st, the state says no. We've established that you are an open district for all seats and as many seats as you can get. You don't want to do that.
Kindergarten registration process officially closes on March 13, the deadline. However, we do have families that come in after that date. So we'll have a little bit of a better idea of what our numbers are at that point, but as Joe mentioned.
And that's just sign up, that screening doesn't happen much?
No, screening doesn't happen until June. Currently, it's scheduled for June 3rd.
So does it make sense to table this vote until we know what our kindergarten registration looks like, or is that really a non-factor?
Well, the problem is you have other grades that are looking already...
And you'll have a number, but it will fluctuate.
Okay.
We take a chance on elementary every single year. I think you know that. It's just, we just don't know. Four years ago, it was, the only enrollment that we had was 22 students to Norton High School, all residents who moved in. You know, and we were, we were in a tough situation that summer because everybody that enrolled went to the high school. And those were citizens.
And we can always change this up until June 1st, you said?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't want to run the risk of turning anybody away that's making, you know, making us their choice. That's what my concern is.
Especially with more districts in the area doing some choice. So what are your thoughts?
No, my thought was just as stated, I just don't want to be turning anybody away that is, you know, obviously, we put up, we put up our district against anyone in the area.
Right.
And for the, other than siblings, because it's convenient. But I mean, if someone outside of that, you know, cohort is coming here, I don't want them to be turned away because of the limit on the, on the seats. That's just my thoughts, but...
Right.
But we also have to be careful because we did make the commitment to try to lower the kindergarten classes as well, so by...
I think it's a calculated risk either way, but I think in this scenario...
I think the 10 seats are going to be fine, to be quite honest, based upon specifically already having to add two teachers. So the difference is going to be, are the classroom sizes going to be 18 or are they going to be 19? That's, that's the real debate. Unless we have, our numbers are so whacked out in terms of birth rates that we get new numbers, we just can't hit it not... Here's the problem, I'll give you an example. The enrollment numbers situation that I've done, that NESTIC did as a third party, it's off by over 100. And you can, you can trace that back all the way to our kindergarten enrollment issues that we've had.
Okay, just an example for you. Last year at LGL, we had, it was either 10, it was 10 to 12 new registrations after August 1st for kindergarten. And that's why those class sizes were so much bigger than they were originally.
You could also vote kindergarten and cap it at 10, and just do all the other grades at 5, and then the no cap is 6 to 10. And you're just taking the chance on day one. At least, we could know by May 1st, our better class numbers are actually by June 1st, let's say, we usually have a lot of registrations, even more registrations come in. Or we could come back to you on May 13th and say, we're recommending another change to kindergarten enrollment based upon the enrollment we currently have.
So if we did, if we did 10, you're saying the differences between 18 and 19 students per class?
Depends on, it all depends on a couple of things. It depends on family situations, and if you have a lottery, and it's also going to depend on what side of town. We typically try to keep the class sizes as close to each other as possible. So sometimes you might have a person from this side of town or another town. So let's say Ataboro, who we actually, ends up at the LG, just because of class sizes, or vice versa. Those are the people that we would require movement before we did anybody with anything with the census.
I think that, I mean, I think I look to you guys and what your recommendation is in knowing that we can always adjust it if needed before June 1st. I think as, as long as we know we can do that, we just monitor how things are looking and go from there.
So do we have a motion to approve the school choice as written?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closing the public hearing.
Okay, so we're closing, I have to get a motion.
Yeah, yeah, you need a motion to close the public hearing and a motion to open the other public hearing.
I have a motion, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on school choice?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to reopen our school committee meeting.
No, motion to open the public hearing on the FY21 budget.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Doesn't matter who the chair is, it happens this way every year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you do it this time? This is fun though.
Next one's rocking the scissors.
Okay. Okay. I'm used to it.
I'm just going to stand over here and wait.
The recommended school budget as recommended by the school committee with changes from the Saturday workshop of Saturday, March...
Where the date was?
29th. Oh, sorry, 29th, that's right, so we, sorry. Here we go, we're going to hold style. Our budget priorities, once again, will continue with the vision 2022. Priorities that were established by a committee of over 20 folks and voted and accepted by the school committee a number of years, or a year ago. This is establishing our vision that we've established for the needs of the district over a period of three years. We continue to pay attention to the student social emotional health, teaching the whole child, and school-wide safety are the three biggest priorities for the district. This is not new to Norton Public Schools, this is the second year of these priorities. The budget has two major line items. It has a mandated line item, including special education and English language learners, that we are mandated by federal and state law to provide. We have no wiggle room in this, that part of the budget. And we have general education, which I would also tell you has about 70% of that budget, which is mandated contractual obligations that we have. The budget process, so that you know, started back in November, early December, through Matt Wells' office, through all teachers, all employees, department heads, directors, et cetera. Then we meet with folks at the principal and director level, and then we work our way up to the recommended budget, and then the school committee budget as a final vote. The cost center increase for the mandated budget is 5.31. What that means is within the budget of special education and ELL, it goes up 5.31%, but as an overall budget impact, it's 1.91%. The priorities in this area are maintaining current special education staffing because we have no wiggle room, creating a new Norton Middle School step program, and three, best program, step program?
Best.
Best program, sorry, I know that's screwed up, so that takes care of that. So it's best program, B-E-S-T, sorry, my bad. And three, supporting the special education students in inclusion classes at Norton High School as a priority. The budget, in this particular phase, as mandated, also includes an English language learner teaching position. We're at over 60 students needing required state and federal ELL support, and we are not currently able to meet the needs of those students, including also those former students that were learning English that we still have to track and provide services to as needed. This particular budget here are positions. This is a together position because it goes into the best program. This is a special education inclusion teacher at the high school. And this position is the English language learner, which is still to be decided where exactly it's going to go. It's going to be depending on the caseloads, and then depending on that caseload, then we have to pinpoint splitting the position. So it could be a person who spends time at the high school, middle school, and the Yell, somebody's at the Yell and the LGN, or any combination of that. And that's based on current enrollment only, okay? The next phase is the general education budget. That's an 8.9 increase on cost center. This is where you have the most people in the district, general education, and it's a 5.75 increase on the budget line as a bottom number. The priorities here include student safety, culture, and climate at Norton High School. You'll see what I mean. Student programming at all schools, shifting personnel to support increased class sizes at the JCS and LGN in grade 3 in particular, we have that bubble, and supporting the addition of two kindergarten teachers for JCS and LGN. We are using our tentative retirement announcements that have been made. Two are in writing, two are not in writing, but we're using the retirement savings to move into those positions. General education positions, we're adding a dean of students at Norton High School. This is a teacher contract position. As a dean of students, this is not an administrator, does not evaluate. It takes care of all issues to do with student culture and climate, i.e. student discipline. This is in response significantly to not only mental health issues that we're having as part of the support system, but also the issue of marijuana and vaping. This is not new issue to Norton per se, but we are at the point right now of significant concerns. And I know I have students in the room with him, with me today, that are not part of this issue, but there is a significant issue that, of an impact. Testing later, by the way. We have, where we have a significant concern about how our students that are not vaping, that are not causing issues, are feeling some serious concerns, not only about their own safety, but that, the safety of the building. It's a position that should have been here years ago, to be quite honest. We've just hit a point right now where what do you do with a student that is vaping? If we believe that suspending a student from school for vaping, I just want you to go back to the days of smoking in school and how much that really helped to stop smoking in bathrooms. It didn't. So many of us who didn't smoke, you know, had to deal with secondhand smoking and all of that stuff that used to take place back then. The second part is the increase statewide, going from nicotine vaping to THC vaping. That is what every principal in the Commonwealth is reporting as they get to their general meetings, that the vapes are not with nicotine, they're with THC. That is a big concern. There's a story out of Newburyport, you might have heard it, about a student who's a student athlete, who's a hockey player, who was doing fine in school, began vaping. He can't take a shift up and down the ice. He can't take a shift, never mind losing the captaincy. And by the way, this is a story that he's told on Nova. So it's an approved type of thing, I'm not, I'm not calling out anyone. This is how bad of an epidemic it is. U.S. Surgeon General has announced it as an epidemic, so we need some support to be able to do that. We have tried to close bathrooms, we all know how well, how well that went. We've tried to establish and do have, as often as we can, teachers going into bathrooms, signing in and signing out students as we can. We have anti-vaping monitors in the bathrooms. We're establishing over 55 hits, 55 hits per minute, per hour at Norton High School right now, and higher, and some days higher. So we know that this stuff is happening. It's about prior to establish and reestablish a culture and having a position to help with that. Two positions at Norton High School are an added shift from part-time to full-time, a music teacher from .8, adding two, another day of service, and then starting a new American Sign Language Word Language program, adding a third language to Norton High School. Again, starting small, as you can see by the cost here, total cost is $23,000 for that .4, which is .2 music and .2 sign language. We are adding a district-wide nurse. We have data collected by all our nurses every year, as we're supposed to track. Last year, we had over 20,000 visits to our nursing program at the five schools. We're at over 11,000. We have individual students that are seen every hour on the hour for whatever their medical condition may be. So this establishes, A, a better way of not having a non-nursing day within the building, and it's our, it would be our sixth nurse, and that would be the filler nurse that would be needed, but also allow for the screening. One of our schools right now, we're getting into almost the close of scoop, the entire school year before the screening is done because of the number of visits that are taking place, and we have data to support that. The library and media specialist position for Norton Middle School and Yell Elementary School, so it's for library and for here, and for the Yell School, is a split position, three-day, two-day. And at no cost of the budget are the two kindergarten classes that I'm shifting via the retirement positions. Again, this is just based on the class size projections. Fees, we're recommending, through the school committee's work the other day, reducing the bus fees from 350 to 250 per student. That will increase the budget by just under $56,000 back into the budget. And we are recommending the athletic fee be reduced from 350 to 250, and hockey, which is our only overexpress line, from 550 to 350. That has an increase of the budget of almost $81,000. We maintain the current activity fee at $50, and we increase, are recommending the increase of the Low Nances preschool tuition by 3%. You'll take, you'll do that as a vote later, because it's a separate vote, but still, it's part of our general recommendation. This is, this along with the class size reduction in grade 3 and kindergarten are probably priorities. Class size, one, fees, two, from at least three members of the school committee that have articulated that. And that's how that's built. School choice funds, a million 42 in total, 760, 478 in appropriations currently in this budget, with a remaining balance of 282, of which part of the school year we'll have to utilize for situations that we may have, like we've done in the past. And we have serious concerns that we're only leaving that amount in a revolving account of that, of that type. Here are our federal grants, nursing grant, early ed grant, as projected. IDEA, that's 100%, mandated personnel, that's all paraprofessionals, not including the remaining amount that we spend, that's a portion. Title I, Title II-A, Title IV. I'll be down in DC at the end of the month to talk about two of those, IDEA and Title I, going down there on behalf of superintendents statewide to talk to elected officials about the federal government not cutting. Title I is General Neal, our assistant superintendent, who's also in charge of Title I. We'll tell you, is a big concern for Massachusetts, because although, correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, the federal funding is going up for Title I, the hit to Massachusetts is that Massachusetts is going to see none of it.
That's correct.
And it's all based upon poverty. So that has a little bit to do with our, our statistical numbers and the way it's done. Total grants are estimated at 803,0914, projected, I should say. And the circuit breaker for special ed reimbursement that we get is projected at 65% or $900,000, that's put right into tuitions for special education. Other, currently, the Norton Teacher and Paraprofessional Association are in negotiations. We do not have a settled contract for almost 300 of our employees. Our budget reflects a number that the subcommittee of the school committee in negotiations feels they are comfortable with at this time, and we appreciate that that number not be discussed for the sake of negotiations. However, it's, you know, somebody could probably figure it out. The substitute line item is set at zero within this budget. I don't know how many substitutes I'm going to need, I keep putting money in there, and every year, I'm running negatives. This year's alone is, is negative 100, over 100,000 already. There are no new administration positions, replacing retirees and using the costations for personnel needs, and reduction in school choice allowed, allowed new students for FY21. So my concern is, how many students are we actually going to have going forward with school choice? Number one, with competition. As you know, there are some in the town that don't have a whole lot of love for it, they don't understand it, don't want to utilize it, they don't see it as a million dollars worth of revenue. Prior to 2014, that number was zero new revenue. So, I just have to grab my sheet here. Your total budget request as recommended is $32,252,000,090, or a 7.66% increase for a total increase of $2,294,442. All these numbers and information after the vote will be published tomorrow in the district website for folks to download as they wish. So that's our general recommendation. I know the priorities of the school committee and the, and the administration have allowed for us to create this. I have concerns about this being funded, of course. And then the last part is, I continue to meet with Mike Unis, our town manager, James Wallow, our accountant. We've met with the subcommittee of the finance committee to just give a big picture. Our next one with them will be to dig a little deeper into some areas, and then on the 16th, we're actually presenting our budget to them. And hopefully, at that time, I know that they're not voting on our budget, but I, I'm hoping that the, the new process we have in place will allow for the rest of the membership not coming to those meetings to ask for some further detail and information from our budget, so that we can have that done before there's an actual vote of the budget. That's always been the intent of adding that extra time and effort for all parties that are, that are involved. So your vote tonight is for 32,252,090.
I think it reflects, if I may, to Sherry, I think it reflects the work of the committee on the open meeting on Saturday. I don't think it's perfect to that, to some of the things that we wanted to, that the three members that were there wanted to see, or four members that were there wanted to see, but at this point, I think it's the best that we could put forward. If the budget comes in at 3%, then we've got 4.77 worth of issues if the budget comes in. So, and what do we offset for the fall, if anything? We're already offsetting substitutes.
I got it.
Currently, yes.
I think based on Saturday, it's a good start, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's just trying to get to that point.
Yeah, it's 10 years of, an average of 1.1%. That's, you continue to make up for that. You're not yet at year 10 of trying to make up for that. You're actually, if you look at our numbers, you're entering year six of getting budgets that have been 2.5, 3 or higher, combination of the fall and the spring, spring town meeting in the fall to make up for that. With a real problem, and that is the, some of the uncontrolled line items. We can control contracts in terms of negotiating the best deal and all of that, but at the end of the day, we have one area that is very difficult. This year's, some of you, I know you weren't at the meeting, but members of the FinCrom that were at the meeting that Matt and I presented, and members of the administration, where, you know, we're, have $160,000 of unanticipated special education transportation. Changes, changes, so not necessarily new bodies, but changes because of issues with students. And again, that's not a, an unforeseen, all right, excuse me, that's an unforeseen situation that, you know, how could I propose a budget that says I'm going to keep $160,000 for the sake of something I don't know about and that I've been told, and then potentially have to deal with the issue that the budget is inflated. Last year, our total transfers for the year was 100, just shy of $170,000. Total transfer for the year. So that's the four major line items that you have, that we have to report. We did four, and it was at the last, it was at the last, it was at, over the summer, or the last meeting is our projection, because we have to have everything done by July 13th or something like that, and we vote prior to that. So that's the presentation for tonight. We'll, we'll be on the road with staff starting in the next few days. We did not add Paris to kindergarten as projected at one point. We did not add a number of positions under technology, under cor...
under technology, under curriculum, under support services for students in the general classroom. None of those positions are in this budget. So those are all these situations that we deal with. We have four, let me rephrase that for the record. We have two written retirements for next year, two verbal retirements that I anticipate becoming written, but I think it'll be later. Folks are always walk, walking through, going to the retirement board, really figuring out what it means and all of that. But I'm, I think we're going to be looking for a significant number of special education teaching positions. I think that's going to be where we're going to see our retirements this year. Those are going to be difficult to fill.
But the retirements, you already...
Savings, savings in what we do is we take the difference between where people are going out and where we anticipate hiring.
I thought we already did that, with the four that we expect. Oh, so you're saying if there's more?
If there's more.
Okay.
Do we vote on this?
Yeah, you could, you can close the public hearing, and you can vote it now. There is a line item below, but you can vote on it now as well.
Yes.
Question on mandates. We hear a lot of mandates. Most of us are not in the arena, don't, or we're not. Don't understand what that means. When the state tells you that you're mandated to educate a child in X, do they tell you what the class size needs to be? Do they tell you, what are the parameters that...
Within specialized, within specialized, and Jean, you can add to this. Within specialized classrooms, we have federal and state mandates that are actually equal to the number of teachers and paraprofessionals supporting students. So for an example, without, without a student being a one-to-one, or a behavioral one-to-one, or a need one-to-one, you could have a specialized classroom with X number of students. But the moment you go above that, then you need that other adult, that other adult, that other adult. I know Diane Cognali is here, who's a paraprofessional for us and a leader in the union, could speak clearly to some of those thoughts in terms of the students. A student may be one-to-one. I think a lot of people would say to us, those one-to-ones can become a one-to-one September 1st. I didn't budget for it. Our biggest concern that we have right now is around social, emotional, and behavioral. That, that's the climb that we're seeing with students. We'll have a breakdown as part of this budget on how many types of the nine learning disabilities that students are chartered into that have severe disabilities and need specialized programs. The best program, not the step program, that was my mistake. The best program that's moving to the middle school with a full-time teacher, full-time parent, that doesn't exclude that three more students come, or doesn't include three more students are coming. That's based upon what we know. But what that has done is created a 21st classroom of specialized instruction in the district. That's a pretty significant number of programs for a district our size. If you were to take all that we pay for staffing, materials and supplies, transportation even, and the total cost of a family plan for health, $20,000 roughly, on the town side, and say all, all of those employees took that family health plan, you'd still be saving millions because of the cost. Right off the bat, one student to go out of district for us is at minimum at just over $46,000, not including transportation. At minimum, for one. And we can try and do a good job of trying to put students together, but remember, they're not just going to one specialized area of the same program. They may be going to Plainville, Rentham, Wallpole, number of different communities where the specialized programs are housed.
Okay, and then their school choice. Do we know how many kids choose it not to be educated and go elsewhere? I'm not, I'm not counting the ones that have at least been...
No, we have, we have... Yes, we have charter school, Bristol Aggie, Southeastern.
I'm going to say that, I'm going to go to Doc High School, for example.
Oh, choice going out?
Yes.
I think last year's total was about $160,000. Though that's, that's our own families...
What was it, for student?
It's 5,000. Well, it's, it's 5,000 minimum, but it averages about 6,400, 6,300 because of service providing with any student with an IEP. And then you have the students who enroll at homeschool, which is over 20 students for us. And then we have students who enroll in private school from day one. And that can average, on average, I don't have a number in front of me right now, and I don't want to just throw out a number, but that's not just two or three, that's...
So you don't have to go to private school? You don't take funded?
I, I see no funding from those students on day one. They've never enrolled with us. And then we have students that we provide extended services to. So you might be a student who needs, who attends a private school but needs speech therapy. You pay for that. You, meaning the taxpayer. A student who needs, like, so OTPT speech are the main ones that we see. Sometimes specialized academic support. So they can be attending a private religious school, a private school, but if they need that service, you're, we're the ones who provide that service.
Based on the meetings you've had with the internal accountant and the manager, I think, is that... How realistic is this, getting that increase?
As a total right now? I don't think that that's the number we're going to end up in, but one of the things that I'm, I'm pushing is a real look at some of our, for lack of a better phrase, what I would call overly conservative estimates. Some of them that can't be controlled by anyone except certain groups that support those or make those decisions. Remember that the town has consistently run on free cash, which is, you know, Steve's here, we, we know what that means. Eventually, that game's going to come to an end, or come to a situation where there's not going to be $3, $4 million available at, at the Fall Town Meeting. But we also know that there's no love for anything else except for cut, 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 and, and, and that's what we have to do. Then we will start with special education, and ELL will be cut zero. They'll be cut zero. And then we, we start hitting the general education classroom. So reducing the class sizes, that'll be gone right away, and cutting elsewhere. So programmatically, that's problematic for us because really, the only way to look at this is, where can you do, where can you do the least damage in terms of day-to-day? If you have mental health, or what we call social-emotional learning, and you're increasing class sizes, all that's going to do is increase special education costs, because that's what history shows you, is that if you can't serve the students without the mandate, then it becomes the mandate for whatever it is. The biggest department that we have in Norton since I've gotten here is literally student support. And it's predominantly around psychologists, special education, counseling. We've added more of those positions since I've been here than any other department. So when people say to me, have we lost teachers? We've cut 29 general education classroom teachers, but we've hired almost 19 support staff-like positions over that same time.
Do we have any idea what's causing this? Kids in this, societal issues?
Well, I will tell you... I, I...
Million-dollar question.
All the above. D, it's, first of all, it's really important to know a couple of things. First of all, private schools are seeing this, colleges are seeing this, charter schools are seeing this, Norton is seeing it, Southeastern's seeing it, everybody's seeing it. It is a societal issue. Some people have suggested it's around every kid gets a trophy, too many years of that. I don't, I'm not, I think that's too, too bland of a statement for lack, without being insulting. I think that we have, some, some people would say another kind of general statement that, you know, we're not parenting, we're being best friends. Okay, maybe there's some of that, too. I think, and I'll give you, I'll give you a perfect example that's connected to it, and I may be wrong, so I'll, I'll swallow the, my tongue later if I have to, which is something that every once in a while I have to do. We're almost at 18,000 Americans that have died from the flu season, but the anxiety level in my schools right now about the coronavirus is crazy.
Not only in this school, trust me.
And the problem that I have is that that is part of our mental health problem. We're creating anxiety for children. If there's a, honest to goodness, and I'll give you an example. I do, I make, as a parent, I make a ton of mistakes every day.
We all do.
Right? But the one, probably the only thing I'm proud of as a parent? Many things, but the one I like to say aloud all the time is, my kid never watched the morning news until she got to eighth grade. Because I didn't think she was ready to start her day every day with the blah that you hear on either Fox, CNN, or your local channel. She just wasn't ready for it. And I think she's ready now. She needs to start to enter the real world, if you will, of knowing what's going on. I think we have too many kids, we've had situations in this town where, in, right here in Norton, we can talk about where it's been some real negative publicity, and we've got kindergartners walking in and talking about it. Why? So I think one of the reasons we have the mental health issues that are seen in society is because our kids are being asked to grow up too quickly.
But I think, and obviously, this isn't a result here, where is the line? I mean, the schools can only do so much. It can't be, you know, I mean...
I have one, I have an answer. Change healthcare. It's, it's my biggest problem. You're asking me to provide services that should be supported by, by, by the federal government as a right, I, I'll rephrase that, by a third party, not just by my folks.
I agree, that's what I'm saying. Where is the line? Do you say, okay, this is as much as we can do, and, and nobody wants to turn away to get anything? But I mean, there's a line to everything. Say, you have X amount of issues, these issues, you know, whatever they may be. Can't absorb all the resources, I mean. It's probably so harsh.
Well, I think the, the biggest thing for us is that we try to put the kids first, so we don't have a line.
I agree, we're up for that.
There is no line. And the other thing is, when you have mandated things in your budget, they have to be paid no matter what. Whether we get 1%, 10%, 2%, whatever it is, the mandates are paid first. So if there are going to be any cuts, they cannot be in the mandates. And if they, if we don't even get our mandate-funded budget, I mean, I don't even know where we're going. I mean, it's going to be one huge bake sale because we have to pay those mandates. So anytime that we end up with not enough for the mandates, or if we can at least cover the mandates, it comes from the general ed, which it is what it is. I mean, we have, we have to do, the mandates have to come off the top first, no matter what. That's where we're stuck.
I think it's, you know, we're still early in the process. You know, I will tell you that the biggest disappointment, as many at the table know, is that the Student Opportunity Act, as voted by the Senate and the House, has given no opportunity to the Norton population.
All Title I schools, right?
Well, it's all communities with significant issues around ELL and poverty. Thirty, 35 districts receiving 80% of the money. Originally, I said, by the way, 35%. It's actually 35 districts receiving 80% of the money. We have districts receiving, imagine if we had received 450 per student. If we had received instead of $30 per student, the situation for us here in Norton wouldn't be perfect, but it'd be, it'd be significantly better in terms of our overall budget, because we'd be getting that sum from the state. I met yesterday with Senator Feeney. He's very much in favor of trying to increase that $30. But again, he's going to need support and votes from both the House and the Senate. And then the second one is the one that you all know about, which is the special education transportation circuit breaker, which would give 25% of our cost for transporting special ed students back into the circuit breaker account. And of course, you know, you don't, you see that money based on your current, it's always a year behind. And the only time that you really have a good year is the years that you, you, a student leaves and you're still receiving a partial of that money and all of that. Those are the two big issues for us, because that could be, depending on how the formula works out, that could be in excess of a quarter of a million dollars. Could be, and I stress that, could be. But, you know, yeah, go ahead.
So can I just comment on your question about the line, and where's the line? Particularly when we're dealing with students with mental health issues and things like that, it sort of ends up being a circle. So where's the chicken and the egg, and how does that happen? But that line is when, when those mental health issues or other health issues start to impact the student in class and their access to education. And when they're not able to access the education, that's when the mandates then kick in, and we have to do what we need to do to try to provide them an education while we're supporting mental health at the same time.
But you don't have psychologists on staff, correct?
We do.
You do?
We have school psychologists on staff.
And the other ones you're handling?
We have adjustment counselors that are handling the counseling, guidance counselors that are supporting a lot more of the college career, but also dealing with mental health. Our psychologists do predominantly student assessment evaluations so that we can, in the process of whatever the needs may be under the IDEA, under special education for services, then after providing direct services, that's through the adjustment counselors and other counselors in the district.
We also do a lot of overlap with outside providers as well to make sure that we're meeting the student where they are and trying to be as consistent as we can.
So you might have a student that's actually getting counseling from a private through insurance, their family, and we're also still providing services.
Maybe you should build their insurance company.
Well, that's, that's, that's the, to be quite honest, that's the model that we want. But, and allow for those funds. Now, we're allowed to do some of that now through what's called Medicaid reimbursement. We've been averaging about $200,000, but that goes right to the general fund under state statute. In the town of Norton, it's so-called Split 70/30. 30 stays with the town, 70 comes back to us, but it becomes part of the free cash. In other communities, 100% of that goes back to the special education budget in the Fall Town Meeting. Three of the local communities around us do exactly that. But it is what it is.
Any other questions? Do you have a question?
There's nobody here.
That may be part of the...
That's why I came to try to keep you guys entertained.
You're doing a good job. So you need a motion for vote?
So a motion to vote on the budget as...
Vote to close, close the public hearing?
Vote to close the public hearing. So moved second. All in favor?
Aye.
And you can vote on the budget here, or you can wait until number seven underneath.
We'll wait until number seven.[1576.81] We'll wait until number seven.
Okay, wait until number seven.
So now I have to open up my meeting?
No, your meeting's still open.
All right. We need to do it, I don't think we can do an approval of the minutes of February 6th because I was not here.
It's okay, you can still, by statute, not, because you don't attend a meeting doesn't mean you can't vote on the minutes. You can still vote on them. Mike Keun and I were just discussing this the other day, because it happened at the building committee meeting, where I was at with him.
So then should I sign those too?
Yep.
So vote to approve the February 6th meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And vote to approve the Saturday, February 20th, what about, 20th meeting?
No, they're not done yet.
February 29th meeting?
We're rewatching the video. To be sure.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No, no, I'm gonna, or you.
Ann Morris?
I have reviewed and approved the following warrants, February 6th, 2020, $872,789.70. February 20th, 2020, $455,065.05. February 27th, 2020, $241,786.97. I wish to enter them into public record.
Student Raps, you're up.
Oh, all right.
Sorry, we did so long.
Did you just clear my throat?
I'm saying, this is the longest time we've gone without talking.
Exactly.
I know, this is counting public.
Mine's officially-
You guys dropped out of the public hearings.
Okay, so I'm going to start with, like, there was a bit of a crossover between the JCS and the LG. So it was Read Across America Day on Monday, and the JCS and the LG are celebrating with a spirit week with Dr. Seuss themes. A few of the days include Wacky Wednesday, which was today, and Crazy Soft Day tomorrow. And both schools also have girls' night right before vacation. The LG had the Winter Carnival last weekend, and it was a huge hit. Everyone had fun, pictures all over Twitter. And for the JCS, last week, Mr. Rappold from Personal Bests came in and spoke to the students about bullying. And there's an incoming kindergarten open house next Thursday.
Over at the YL, Mr. Gagian followed six students through their day to step into the shoes of the students. That sounds like a really cool thing for him to do and to just kind of have. Maybe that can be done in a couple other schools. Be nice. The Read Across, during Read Across America Day, they hosted English Honor Society members from the high school, and there's a fifth grade field trip next Thursday and Friday.
At the middle school, so the middle school was just officially named, renamed, now in Spotlight School. So congrats to the staff and students that make it so great. The spring fling is a week from tomorrow. Six students will be competing in the National History Day district level this weekend to earn a place at the state finals in April. The two projects that they are presenting are a play on racial conflicts in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and a film about Grandma Gatewood, the first woman to hike the Appalachian Trail solo.
And then over at the high school, we have the art show at Patriots Place, and that happened from the 14th through the 16th. And the art that was displayed there is now being displayed in the library until the end of March. The junior class had their ice cream social for raising the most money for the parent advisory board. There was the DECA field trip at the end of last week, and we heard that it went great. A record number of students are going to internationals, so that's great to hear about. Glad that that was a success. The Global Fair and the Spread the Word Inclusion Day both happened today. The Kathy Bailey Memorial Basketball Game is this Friday at the high school at 7:00. Mr. NHS is next Wednesday at 7:00, so that should be a fun night. I will, I will be participating.
We're in your moment, so you can vote for Cooper.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for doing my promotion.
Of course, of course.
Your own personal hype person.
There's a course selection night and AP night, both of which are tomorrow. The boys' basketball team is absolutely killing it right now. They won last night's game, and they're moving on to the Division III championship game, which is on Saturday at Intone, and I don't think we have a time yet.
The date is, sorry, the time is to be determined based on that scheduling.
Keeping you out for that.
Yep.
The Starry Night Dance for freshmen and sophomores is next Friday, and the Drama Club is putting on a performance of Freaky Friday on the 20th and 21st.
The fifth grade field trip, do you know where they're going?
This is the one thing we were worried.
It says the hall.
Online, it says the hall.
Oh, okay.
Oh! We're like, what?
Online, I was like, I wonder what that is.
We're talking about two days in a row, half the grade goes one day, half goes the other.
Okay.
We were talking about it before, and we were like, do we say the hall? What if they ask us what hall it is?
You don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot, guys. Moving on to review and vote to approve the updated vaping language for the Norton High School student handbook.
Thank you. The recommendation of Principal Dolman, he's recommending the following addition to the Smoking and Tobacco Use Guidelines on Page 31 of the Norton High School, 2019-2020 current year student handbook, to read the following. With the aim of protecting the health and safety of the entire school community, Norton High School may utilize vaping detectors in school bathrooms. Vaping detector technology detects vapor from, vapor from smoking, from tobacco and marijuana, as well as detecting loud noises typically associated with aggression, disruption, or vandalism, with no audio or video recording taking place. Vaping detectors may also, may be used in concert with hallway surveillance cameras and/or staff supervision to assist the district in determining who engaged in inappropriate or prohibited activity. The district will handle any suspicion of vaping activity, aggression, disruption, or vandalism detected related or otherwise, in accordance with the student search and student discipline policies and procedures. If students found to have tampered with a vaping detector, will be subject to disciplinary action in accordance with student discipline policies and procedures, as well as being responsible for any property damage caused by the students tampering. This is a school year change, so it does require your vote. This has gone through legal counsel's review as well, so that you have.
So because this isn't in place, is that why they haven't, have they been able to do anything about the 50 per hour?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's still a procedural issue, but as a policy, you still have to have it as a set policy just for our own liability.
So do we have a motion to approve the vaping language? So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Now we're on to the school budget.
Yep. Recommendation, Madam Chair, of a $32,252,900 school budget for FY '21.
Do we have a motion to accept the school budget as reviewed? So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Financial report. You're up, Ms. Gagian.
Okay, so year-to-date financial report is through the end of February 27th. The current bottom line is showing a negative balance of $42,000. We have a couple of drivers that are, that are adding to this. One is, we are still projecting our utility in electricity and in gas, natural gas usage at the actuals that we saw last year. We're waiting for more bills to come in, as we're just finishing up the window project, before we start making some real projections to what it might be for the end of the year. We think that the utilities are going to come in lower than we have encumbered. We think it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $450,000 to $500,000 in that range for the electricity. And then again, for gas, around $250,000 to $300,000. So we think we are over encumbered on that line, and money should be covered in the budget. We're just not ready to adjust the, yeah, we're going to continue to protect the district in case those bills do come in higher. Second thing that's a big driver on this is our current substitutes are overspent by $135,000. Projecting that forward as of right now, we think that's going to finish out around $225,000 overspent. We do have a supplemental appropriation to the, for the town meeting for that. Additionally, what we're not seeing is here, is we are anticipating that there's going to be some over expenditure on the substitute transportation lines. We also have a supplemental-
Substitute transportation?
I'm sorry, I mean, special education.
We picked them up.
It's the only way to get them to work.
Somebody's going to say, so I may as well be the two.
So right now, so $225,000 in the substitution line, that we are at zero for the next quarter.
Yeah.
This, this information will be shared with the Chair of the PINCOM and the Chair of the Voice Selecting, as we communicated the other day. It's their responsibility to share with the membership.
We also have a second report that we give to you, which is the revolving grant funds year thing. And everything's kind of moving along as projected. Food service, school lunch, still a little early to kind of predict that. We're keeping an eye on it. We have about $47,000 that's on appropriation. We'd love to move it back. We seem to be running about even right now. We haven't had to put more money on appropriations, so that's looking pretty good. Facility revolving is, again, we utilize that to support facilities, so that's a lot of our BICO and REES fees. Transportation, currently mostly spent down. We get that about this time of year, and then go back to appropriations. Athletics is collecting on track. TPC revolving, not, nothing came in this year, we didn't have TPC. Unrestricted gifts is sitting where it's at. That's extra money for each of the principals and their schools to utilize. Tutoring, we have a small amount that comes into that. We haven't had a lot of expenditure there. Lost books, not a huge expenditure there, which is great. Tuitions is, again, sitting very, very level. We had some expenditures this year. Club fees, we will hit that at the end of the year after we collect all the fund, the club fees. So we do the second half of all stipends, we hit against the revolving fund. A little bit, Little Lancers is continuing to move forward with collections, right where we expect it to be. And school choice right now is projecting to have an additional $161,000 for expenditure this year. We're already planning in that year-to-date incumbents number, $230,000, which we're maintaining for next year's budget. And then grants are all in line with expenditures, and expect to be spent to zero. Circuit breaker, we did budget for that to be a little bit higher this year. We have had to spend a little bit more to support the tuitions, district tuitions. But we are still carrying over the balance of that.
And if I'm correct, the TPC is not happening, is happening over the summer, right?
August.
So are we expecting anything?
We do not know anything until we have more votes on the athletic complex, which you're going to hear about next, and/or what the role of the committee will be about housing certain things that they're looking for that I'm not ready to discuss publicly, but they're, they're, they're needed space.
The term is?
Yes.
Any questions? Thanks, Matt. Thank you. And we're going to the athletic complex.
All right, so none of this is overly new for any of you, but for the sake of the public. We wanted to go over the NHS field report. The actual field recommendation is here, and I'll go through that in a minute.
Sorry, Dr. Gagian, was there a question? Sorry.
What's driving the substitute costs so high?
Health. Anything from the flu to cancer to any of that. For example, maternity leaves, maternity leave is my biggest one. The other one is, remember, maternity leave, it's up to 12 weeks, that's paid, if they have the time and sick time in the bank, and I have to pay for that substitute line. So I'm hiring, I bring someone in at, per say, $80 a day, let's say. In some cases, more than that, because they may be longer term than that. And then, sub-line can also be hit for things on workers' comp, because if you go for workers' comp, you get 60 cents on the dollar from the workers' comp process, but the other 0.4% comes out of my sub-line. Because, and, because I guess, so I'm still paying that person 40%, and I still got to backfill.
How many teachers go on maternity leave?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll make sure I have that for you, Steve. But it's, it's, it's easily, every year that I've been here, if it's not double digits, it's very close to double digits every year.
I'm just thinking of the projections in this budget.
Yep.
Nothing.
Yep. So it'd be, the question would be, what's the right number to put in there going forward? Is it six? Is it eight? Being held to it is kind of difficult as well, and that's one of my concerns.
We should have to pull from another line.
Right. Or, or look at, I don't know anything about September, because it's a little early to know about September, or October, November. It usually happens right around June, July. We already voted a budget, so do we take a look at that point, saying, okay, well, we know that the October town meeting, that's, that would be how we backfill it?
Just one more question on the budget before you move on.
Sure.
On the utilities, I believe you said a half a million dollars roughly you're spending a year in utilities?
In electricity, it's a little over a half a million.
Who negotiates that for the town? Is that townwide negotiated?
Yes. Yeah, we changed it five years ago, and we just locked it in for five years.
Coalition?
Yeah. And we go out, and then we look at, we look at the 12-month, 18-month, 24-month, 36-month, 48-month.
That's likely the same thing. That's what's, it is negotiated. I don't know if it was the school committee, so, but we're leveraging all the capital blocks from the whole town to try to-
Mike and I started doing that, I believe, we're in year, we're just entering year five this year. So, and it's, it's definitely been a help, there's no doubt about that. Okay? So thanks to Wade, who helped me to put some of this together on the use of our fields and some of the issues. Our stadium football field, as we're calling it here, is overused. We've added, as you know, 18, minimum of 18 more games in the last four seasons, so the field is having a significant problem to recover from season to season. It's used for soccer, football in the fall, and then in the spring for lacrosse. This past year, we actually moved our lacrosse program down, excuse me, down the street to Finnberg, which we had to pay a fee for utilization, and is not appropriate for that, for that type of a sport. We need to have the field leveled off and seeded at the end of every single season, and that becomes a problem because Thanksgiving, and then we go right into the cold. As you know, seeding shouldn't be taking place in November. It's usually, you know, before your first frost season is usually the recommendation. The hours spent cutting and lining those, that field is two to three times per week, depending on how many games are happening within that week. The sprinkler system is in good condition, which is good to say, but it is used daily. And the concern there is how much water we're using and the cost of, and the efficiency of that, as a question mark. And we'll, we'll get some rough numbers in terms of how much we're actually using. I can't really do the water. And we do have minimal to no storage in that area, as you all know. Our track used to be res serviced and relined. Some real... Trying to find the right word. Some real bummers. I like that word, bummers. Some real bummers that we're at this stage with this track. But this is the perfect example of a six-lane track that should have been an eight-lane, that's a discussion that you'll see in the projection. But if you remember, one of the issues that we had with this track is the amount of sand that was coming onto this track on a regular basis. A few years ago, if you remember, we got Keith to lay out concrete in the area where people used to stand, and it was all sand. That's done some serious damage to this track, as some of you that walk it see it. Can't be used for tournaments. Part of the fencing was done, but not all of the fencing, and all of the old fencing that wasn't done is now all rotted and, if you will, breaking down a field, not rotted, but rusty, I should say. The stadium lights, the poles are outdated. Currently have six bulbs out, and we cannot repair them. They cannot be repaired. It's hard to find replacement parts for these lights. It's costly to run. We're spending more money on these lights because they're not efficient in terms of what was utilized, and we can't change them to LEDs. And it's very difficult to access, because the amount, what you need to be able to access with a truck, you can't put on the track, because it's too heavy. That would damage the track, which then would be something that would come back on us. Stands in the press box, a new sound system is needed. The cheer lift has fail-state inspection, needs to be decommissioned. A new ramp will need to be installed. School board is old and outdated. Old bleachers, our bleachers and portable bleachers are in very good shape, that's a good thing, because usually bleachers are something that aren't, they're in very good shape, and they have passed inspection every year. And our concession stand is very good shape, but it does not have electricity. It has electricity, but it does not have running water, meaning I cannot cook in that field. Everything that comes here is already pre-cooked for it. And you can't, you're not allowed to cook on it, you can't put a, you can't just bring in a barbecue and, you know, start to cook. It's not the way it works, and try to go around the regulations. You have to have the running water, and that's a significant cost, because you'd have to connect some type of sewage to it as well. JV baseball field and JV softball field, those are the fields outside by office area. Those are uneven. Lowman seat needed to level the playing area, especially in the area that starts the L field. As you know, that, that was the area where we started to put, years before me, the stumps, because, and that's what's happening now, is this. No water to support a sprinkler system, no lights or electricity, no storage, and it is not ADA compliant. The practice field, or as we call the pit field, that's an uneven ground as well. That's probably one of the areas where we have some of our biggest safety issues, the drainage issues that we have when it rains, as some of you have seen and know. There's no water to support a sprinkler system, fields are close to the wetlands, are close to the wetlands, which is part of the drainage problem. No school board, no lights, no lights or electricity, no storage, and also not ADA compliant. Summary, we spend a lot of time and money each year to keep these playing areas playable for our high school teams, as well as our town recreational programs. The most concern that we have is the safety of the student athletes, regardless if they're ours or those of the students. Potentials for savings and revenue. Our projections are savings on manpower, which we could definitely use in other areas, as you can see by some of our schools. We're cutting 500 acres of land, right? As a school with two guys, that we're responsible for. And that does include inlining fields, which takes away from doing some of the things that we want to do, i.e. leaf cleanup and all of that stuff. Savings on water and electricity pending, solar connection, that's one of the ideas that we have going forward as part of our RFQ for the town and the schools that is out right now. Savings on chemicals, paint, seeding, et cetera. Increase in usage by community at no cost, pending school committee approval, I put there. Increased revenue from third parties for private tournaments, games, practices. We believe, we don't believe, we know that the going rate for a turf field is $100 to $250 an hour for usage. We know that where we're located, off of 495 and 95, if we do some public relations, could be utilized during some of the heights of the summer that are low for us. And then utilizing, in my opinion, those fields to go directly, those funds to go directly into a line item within the facilities revolving account, that would be for field revitalization. In other words, collecting those fees and keeping it in there for expenses to the field. So that way, you're trying to collect funds, and when you do, you're putting it back into the same area that you're using. The project before you is here. I'll just bring it forward a little bit. I know many of you have already seen it. This is the last recommendation. This recommendation comes in at eight million, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, which is down from the original just under twelve million dollar project by eliminating certain things. What this does, for those of you who want to go through with this, is A, it takes the football field currently and makes it into a turf field and completely changes the track to a, um, eight-lane track with all of the lighting, all new lighting and fencing, et cetera. It does not touch anything to do with bathrooms or all of that because we actually use the, our current, um, high school for those types of situations. It does, it does not do anything with the softball field. That stays as a natural field. The baseball field stays as a natural field. However, behind the Yell school, this is the new section. This is an all multi-purpose baseball, softball, soccer, lacrosse field. Can also be used this way for things like practice. Tennis courts, uh, let me rephrase, let me come back. This section in green here behind the Yell directly, this is also lit up. And it, it creates a walking area that's already here and continues the walking area around this way and then down this way. Um, so you can get all the way over, so it has its own little walking path, if you will. And then the last two parts are not lit, new tennis courts and not lit, new turf field on the pit field. When you break down the cost, some of you have asked. You're looking at a minimum eight million, six-sixty-seven, four-oh-nine as a project. We actually think it'll come in under eight-point-six million based upon other turf field projects. Tottenham is going out this fall or this spring for a revitalization of their current field because it's older and two new fields. Bellingham has done one field and is going out for two fields. This section here alone is, the high school is two-point-eight million. This section here without the tennis courts is four-point-four million, so this is the heart of the change, um, if you will. The tennis courts come in at three-hundred-and-forty-one-five, three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars, and this last turf field comes in at one-million-eighty-three thousand. Difference, the difference between keeping the turf field here and just upgrading it, uh, excuse me, keeping it in a natural field and upgrading it and making it a turf field is approximately three-hundred thousand dollars. That's how much work above, uh, below this area needs to take place. Options you may have, a project as presented from the field committee or break the project, break it down. So break down the question into parts. So part one, part two, part three. It's an option that you can look at depending on other committees and other discussions that need to take place above my pay grade. Make sense? So what would that mean? You could go request a just under three million dollar project here only, but you're not touching any of this. Here's your biggest problem. This is one of my biggest problems as well because this is a lot of practice fields as well. So it's concerning. Um, so at minimum, I would say you're either going out or you're going one, two as one project and leave this for later on. So you'd have the actual practice and playing fields that you need. We'd have to really take a look at the middle school tennis courts as a redo project later on. Tennis courts would not be at the high school. They would be, to be maintained there. We do have a growing tennis program for the record, which is interesting. Um, and this field would just be kept as a natural grass practice field. We would just spend a little bit of money. An upkeep, but it's, it's not a good field because of rain issues.
We would have to move the tennis courts though if the senior center, if they choose to put the senior center by the, in front of the middle school.
It is currently not their intent to do that. Part of the building committee meeting I attended this week.
Right, the Board of Selectmen are voting this month. It's ultimately there.
So tonight we need a vote to move forward our athletic complex project. Um, you can always, I mean, cause like I said, you, you voted as a A project and then come back as a committee and look at options if you're requested to do so by your colleague boards on the Board of Selectmen or other committees. For the record, uh, the timeline on this is this is year five of this project. We've been working on this for five years. For those people that think it started as a capital line item over three years ago. We couldn't act on it because we couldn't get the money. We're finally able to negotiate, uh, get a better plan for money, and then capital gave us the money a year and a half ago.
I think a couple of things I just want to note. I mean, I grew up, not in Norton, but we played Norton. And that field was bad when I graduated twenty-something years ago. You know, it was bad back then, the pit field. Needless to say, I wasn't a star athlete, so I didn't make it up to the big varsity field. I always played on the pit field and it was always atrocious. And having a former student athlete play on that field, that's the common complaint from even the other towns, the refs, the, the field's a mess.
You're, in the, so we're down to two communities in the entire tri-valley that that doesn't have a turf playing field. And what's happening is many of them are already multiple, so they're already a decade ahead of us. In some cases, an actual decade. It's a decade this year that some of them have already had it. But the other problem here is where to practice and then the cost of operations on a regular basis because I'm gonna have to transport students and pay for field use somewhere else. Wheaton is not an option. Um, it's an option every once in a while for a tournament game for us, but it's not an option for daily play. Uh, although we do potentially become a.
Partner.
Partner with them because they may want to use our facilities for i.e. baseball games or the track, uh, potentially. But when you look at this, it's a long-term fix. Again, um, deciding on this or, and how it goes, that is between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. That's not my, um, decision. But could you make some changes that, that, like I said, cuts one-point-three, one-point-five million dollars a project further and not end up with what you want, but, but allow for that to happen going forward? I think that's something to look at. What's really not in play is to say that the only thing we can do is the high school football field because then I still have a problem with where do we practice and where do we go?
I think that's the other thing too. I mean, going back to your first slide that, you know, these, these fields don't make it season over season. These fields don't make it one season. I mean, the last few years, we've had to move our soccer.
Two seasons in a row, we've had to move games. We've, we've had to move games, or my biggest concern is, so your soccer team goes eighteen and know that they're best, best program in the state and you're not gonna be allowed to play a home game. You're gonna have to travel, so then I have to count on Wheaton, which is okay. It just doesn't make long-term sense.
In regards to our day-to-day teaching and learning as well. Um, we're offering wellness classes, physical education classes at the high school. Um, and there are many opportunities for them to come outside and it's part of their curriculum to be doing specific sports or games outside. And when the fields are in bad condition or they're on the edge, they're not able to go out and use those fields either. So it's, it's not just an after-school thing. It, it does directly impact curriculum.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the other thing too, and I, I've said this since we kind of went on this path. You know, if you have a turf field in this area, any tournament in this area, I mean, there's tournaments that stretch, you know, from the Cape all the way up to Fort Devens. I mean, and if you're another option, you're talking about big money can be made on soccer tournaments. And I've, I've been involved in that soccer tournament issue for years, and there's never enough space.
Lacrosse, basketball, and spring sport.
I was gonna say lacrosse is another one too.
So I do need to vote, um, and then again, you're subject to make those changes as a board as you wish, but at least get it so that you can do the forward as part of the article.
So do you have a vote on the athletic complex?
Motion.
Motion. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Joe, were you able to get a copy of this that you gave us and your, uh, show, your PowerPoint to Dinesh for tomorrow's meeting?
Uh, I'm, I'm actually sending it to the Chair of the Building Committee, but yes, Dinesh as well, I've been asked to do that after your vote tonight.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our agenda. Is, is there any other business?
Um, so we might as well talk about this as, I want to first of all congratulate all of our winter athletes, as I do at the end of seasons and some of their season's not over yet, um, as basketball continues its reign. The Texas community is, is, um, Friday night at seven, um, where I believe that, uh, the educators will win once again. Probably shouldn't say that. Uh, and I just want to announce, I want to thank the global education students who presented tonight, and we're gonna make a little change to their schedule next year where we have them at the school committee meeting. We'll probably move the school committee meeting to the high school, set it up in the library, invite the families, and then just go to our school committee at six, at six-thirty and, and be with them. And so that way you guys can see the vote that you took a couple of years ago and what the kids are doing. I learned today, and I spoke full of my, I speak Portuguese as you guys know, and I was able to meet two grandparents tonight who came to see their granddaughter present on her culture background and all of that. And they go to the island of Santa Maria and it was really cool and I got to speak to them and they really looked at me and didn't understand why I didn't learn to speak Portuguese. It was wonderful to meet them though. Um, and lastly, most importantly, just want to announce tonight that international trips, out-of-state trips and field trips are all under review as of today. In other words, decisions on postponements or cancellations will be made, um, as we need to. Um, I know the international trip to Peru is on every, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five students minds. My goal will always be to postpone before canceling. We can postpone now and then make decisions later. Um, we're very happy to be working with EF, who's been, um, very, um, willing to work with us. But it also impacts field trips that are taking place in our schools. DECA, um, eighth-grade field trip in June. Um, so all of these are, are, are potentially impacted, um, by, uh, support or recommendations that are coming from above me that I have to then take very seriously before making a decision. Currently to Peru, there is no coronavirus, uh, situation there, but this is, this is part of the, the thing. And I, lastly, I did give you a handout tonight on, um, our wonderful students from DECA that our student representative has mentioned. And, uh, this is just a quick, uh, info that came from the teacher, Ms. Albright and her crew. I want to thank them and all of the students. And we will, um, do a full public relation to the next couple of days on our success of our students.
And you said that the, um, it's in Nashville?
Yes.
Yes, it's in Nashville. Um, I, I know that Nashville also had a really tough week, so.
Oh, yeah.
It may be the thing.
Right. And if it is in Nashville, I believe it's, is it in April? I think it's April and May. I think it's April as well, late April. I think it's May. Anyways, whatever. I can't remember the dates now, but I'm, I'm always willing to be a chaperone in Nashville.
Me too.
No, that's it. Thank you so much.
So I need a motion to adjourn our open session and enter executive session.
The question says April twenty.
Discussion on RSO agreement and update on contract negotiations not to return to open session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call. Kathleen Stern?
Aye.
Sherri Cohen?
Aye.
Daniel Sheedy?
Aye.
Bye, guys.
Thank you all.